Let's get going.
Yeah, let's go.
Good evening. This is Tuesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting in the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, the ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will possibly wind up as a TikTok perhaps. Or video that will be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Here.
Carol McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
With the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty three P M. Tuesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Uh, board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when not speaking. Speak clearly to avoid uh to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For responses, please wait until you're yielded the floor, state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. First order of business, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any amendments, anything that anybody wants to say about them?
Did anybody find any errors?
Did you put an Easter egg in for us to find?
Maybe.
Maybe. Well, seeing how.
Yeah, I missed it this time. I usually catch it.
It was so engaging. It captured all of your attention.
Exactly.
All right, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. All in favor of um accepting the minutes. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
I'm gonna abstain because I was not at the meeting.
Okay, and Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries um four to one. Thank you. Uh, four in favor, one abstaining. Let me reiterate or restate. Alrighty, is there any other business that we need to attend to? Mr. J.
Um, no, no, we have the A and R to discuss and a few other topics. No other. Actually, has anyone been to the mailbox? I did not. I have the mailbox.
Is the key in it?
It was gonna be. I made a whole bunch of copies and then I now I cannot find them, so I'm gonna make a copy of the one I have.
I'm, I mean, I'll be there Thursday, so. I can, I sometimes I try to use two pencils and the erasers and pull stuff out. That's what I did last time. But.
Yeah, I almost did it. I was, you know what? I went to Lowe's to make a copy and the machine was broken and there was nobody around it.
Do we ever have anything in there that's so security sensitive that because conservation, we just leave the key in the thing.
Oh, yeah.
All the time. Yeah.
Yeah, Tom Tim suggested that I was gonna do it, but I needed, I didn't wanna I wanted to make sure I had a key in case it got lost.
Sure.
And I couldn't find the copies I made, so that's why I went off to Lowe's and.
It's quite the tale, Jay.
Thursday, I may, I'll be heading towards Florida, so I can be able to help you there.
All right. Uh, when's our first appointment?
Seven forty four.
Forty-five.
Okay. Um, Tim and I will have an update on our discussions with Marlboro and if our first appointment was at eight, I was gonna suggest we could do it now, but we'll do it after that.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys were supposed to tell me that so I could put it on the agenda. But I think it's a timely item, right?
Sure.
That counts.
Mister Wheeler, we can't see you tonight.
I'm invisible.
Ah, the invisible man.
Camera.
Yeah. I I always have the cloak of invisibility on, so.
That's where it went.
Yep. Yeah, when the um last movie was made, I purchased it from the uh movie company and it comes in very handy on Zoom meetings.
Nice.
Well, I hope you guys have a lot to describe on the Marlboro meeting because there's just, we had this blast of activity on EDUs. It seems to have quieted down. I got no new news. And the FEMA thing, we're waiting for a um huh, what is it called?
Uh, have you not read the news? You can forget about FEMA.
Right?
Even I who are watching, you know, reality television know that.
Have we heard our grant?
No.
Any grants you're getting, you're supposed to quick grab the money and spend it by I don't know, a couple days from now.
That's disappointing that we haven't heard.
Yeah. Cause that's state, so.
Right.
Yeah, but there are ripple effects, you know?
I was gonna say, is it uh, do you think they're waiting to see what's gonna happen federally?
No, I I think that they were up to some other mischief and as a result, um their attention got drawn away from finalizing the decisions and stuff, so.
I see. Is this the E E A?
Yeah.
They're chronically understaffed anyway.
Right.
And if we don't get the grant, we're gonna have to rewrite our own bylaw.
I know I suspect we're going to leave it as it is. And live with it, but um.
Well, we can certainly take Jane, some of Jane's suggestions and
Yeah.
do what we can.
She did do a review and gave us a lot of.
No, 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 we
Yeah.
we've got pieces of the puzzle we can try to put together. It turns out we need to.
But we're also actually waiting for our action guide to give us ideas for what we can do for our floodplain bylaw, and that's been delayed. We kept.
Yeah.
Whole thing which I'm gonna show you is, I was on Zillow looking at you know, home sales. And I'm not sure it happened, but I clicked on the map, their map, which has lot lines and stuff on it. And there were a bunch of choices like there are in Google Maps, and one of them was flood. So I clicked on that and there's this whole flood overlay that's completely different than the um FEMA one. The FEMA one with the flood insurance, federal flood insurance, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be the FEMA one that controls that.
Yeah, but the one on Zillow is a private company that if you read there, there's a whole bunch of content on their website about what they've done and how it's different, now it's better than the federal data. And um, it's pretty convincing.
You know, that's.
It it doesn't matter though.
Right.
Whether it's better or not.
What's interesting about it, though, is it's uh, I mean, it appears that they've done better modeling and collected more data and whatever. It's
Yeah.
it's better and um you know, what's like what's gonna happen, so. There's a potential that.
So which one's more extensive?
What's that?
Which one is more extensive?
The the one that's.
The private one?
It shows up, yeah, the private one.
So wha- what would the advantage for them be to to make an investment in a in a product that was more extensive when I mean, it's not gonna impact you know, what banks end up having to require for flood insurance and stuff like that, is it?
Well, I I know there, I know there's at least one in one private company that does uh exhaustive risk management on behalf of insurance companies who buy their services.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's it's certainly possible that they can, they can use that uh.
Sure. Hmm. Huh, good. So that's Zillow.
Uh, banks now are taking this into account when they're writing loans.
Big time. I mean, we were twenty years ago and being real careful about what we were requiring people to divulge in regard to what, you know, property they had and all that sort of stuff, so. And it just got more more serious as time passed, and every time the feds came in to review any of our records, they were always looking at flood insurance stuff, you know, were we asking for the right questions and stuff, so. Yeah. Hmm.
Because the federal has a one percent probability area, which is the one that we is usually counted for insurance purposes, and then there's a point two like a three hundred to three hundred year event, once in three hundred years as opposed to once in a one hundred, that's the one percent.
Hmm.
Much bigger area.
I'm sure.
Nice.
Okay, it's seven forty-five. Do we have um our A and R?
Seth is here.
Okay, can you promote Seth, please?
I can.
Thank you.
Can show his uh good evening.
Let's see.
Hi Seth.
Hi, so this is Seth Donahue with Dillson Roy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mark Rhodes. And as you mentioned, we submitted an A and R plan to slightly revise some side lot lines to a plan that the board approved last summer. Would you like me to put it on the screen?
Yes, please.
Let me find my button. All right, so hopefully uh what's before you here is the revised A and R plan. Uh, we've shown some dash lines where the the slight adjustments to side lot lines are. Um, this adjustment is done because there was some ledge where the septic tank was supposed to go. And the applicant does own the remaining land, so it was convenient for him to be able to put the tank where it could fit. And we were able to adjust that lot line. There are no changes to the frontage that the board had previously approved. So the only adjustments are the side lot line areas. Um, this one again was for our septic tank, and this one was to allow the well trucked truck to have better access to a proposed well site. And in turn, the well that was drilled, we've adjusted the lot lines to meet the border health side lot line setbacks. Uh, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to dive into them.
So the dash lines, well, what was there before? These, the the heavy lines are what you're proposing.
Correct, yeah, so we've uh, we've shown right here the the recorded plan. Yeah, we've given a reference to that, um, and this is intended to fully supersede that.
Yeah.
Since the applicant owned um a parcel, it was formerly parcel A, it's now parcel A one. So there was some surplus land, um, we're taking extra land from that leftover and adding it to these lots that'll eventually be conveyed.
Got it.
And has the new well been installed?
There is a well here and a well here. They've all been installed. Um, the fifty feet is the setback, so we're showing that they exceed that as well. So bo- both of these lots are under construction, if that's if that's what the question is.
And nothing is being built on A one?
Correct, so parcel A one is is not a building lot.
Got it.
It's not a building lot now, or is it not a building lot is being conveyed as not being a building lot?
Uh, Mr. Rhodes is more of a farmer now. I think he's transitioning to that, so he likes having, he doesn't want to um convey the land that he doesn't need to to convey at this point, so I I have no idea what he'll do with it in the future, but uh, it would have to come back to this board to be reconfigured to be uh, one of your conforming lots at that point.
Seth, if if you scroll to a corner where we can see the dot or I'll make a motion um.
Uh, you want uh this side here?
Yeah, let me start over here. All right, I'll move that we accept an A and R plan dated January sixteenth drawn by Dillson Roy for Black Pearl Development Corp. LLC. And it shows modifications to lots, one and um, the other one two, is that what it was?
It's actually two and three.
Okay, two lots, two and three.
Or two, and they're becoming two A and three A now.
Yeah. With, okay, so modification to become two A and three A. And somewhere on here, we've uh booking page somewhere.
Yeah, it's on the left hand side.
So it's the newer of the two. If you'd like, I can read it for you.
Seven oh three 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 page. Oh, it's a, it is a book one sixteen, one seventy-three, page ninety-six?
Uh, that that was actually the prior reference.
Okay, so it's book seven three three three, page twenty-six. Approval under the subdivision control are not required.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Any of the board members have? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote to approve this as an A and R approval not required under subdivision control. Uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries the unanimous.
Uh, thank you. So Mr. Rhodes will have to bring you a check.
A check and a form A.
So we had emailed the form A, but I'll have him bring that to you with the um check as well. Uh, do you know what the fee is, or should he just bring a blank check and um work that out with you guys?
Jay, what, do you have that form in front of you? Do you have the um, the fee structure?
Uh, yeah.
I thought it was one point five million dollars. Just leave a blank check.
I'll be there to pick it up.
Me and the cash.
Is it two lots that we're talking about, or what are we, what is a fee for a minor change?
So it's a basic fee and then two lots.
I should have that memorized by now. Oh, you know what? I think it's on the website.
You know, I I I can catch up with him later on it.
Yeah.
I generally get those right, so I'll I'll add it up. I get it. Two lots and whatever the flat fee is, and I'll have him bring that check to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Seth.
So the Mylar is you're gonna sit uh sent to the town so we can sign them all?
Yeah, so Mark has the Mylar.
Mark has Mylar, okay.
I'll have him trade you um check for Mylar, basically. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Took the wiggle out of it. Smoothed out the lot line.
Right?
That's a tough. Have you seen the property? It's it's like it's all ledge and downhill.
It's always.
But it's kind of cool because he's got this house. The house sitting kind of on the downhill slope. And then he's taken all the trees out over where the septic area is, so they're kind of got a nice view out the back of the towards the back of the property.
Cool. Okay, do we uh want to talk about our ADUs or FEMA or the mall? What's our pleasure?
Let's do the mall first.
Do the mall first? Okay.
So just a question, though, we've, Lynn is in the audience. I wondered if she had a particular purpose, and I see C M R P C Zoom two in the audience. Um so I was just wondering before we jump into anything if there's something relevant to either of those folks.
Okay. Anybody raise their hand?
Say.
Good evening.
It's Jane.
It's Jane. Sorry. I couldn't get to my little hooey to change my name on the screen. Uh, she had reached out last week and mentioned that you were working on an A D U bylaw and didn't know if I was available to attend, so here I am, but um, if you have something else that's more urgent, I'm fine with that.
Uh, no, we can do the A D U first. Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great. Thanks for coming.
Welcome.
All right, I'm gonna put you back in the audience, Jane.
Okay. Thank you.
So let's take up A D Us.
All right.
Do we have any news, Mr. Jay?
Uh, actually, no new news. There was all sorts of activity, and then it seems like it went quiet. I did send you guys the draft that I've been working on, but I don't, I don't think it's changed from our last meeting.
Do you wanna, do you wanna bring up that draft? So we can look at it?
Yeah, I do that.
I'd say, can we bring Jane back in from the cold?
Sure.
I mean, I think bring Lynn in too. What the hell? She's, I imagine she's interested in this A D U issue as much as anybody.
I would imagine that's why she's here. Um, Jay, so I did look at the draft bylaw. Um, but I also found that you had sent out the existing bylaw with a bunch of red on it, so are.
That was a while ago.
Yeah.
Beginning, right?
Yeah.
And then at one point uh, mid-December, I took that and I've been to a bunch of meetings and saw other people's drafts and started working on one for us uh, with some questions that we were gonna answer.
Okay, so you're ba- it it just so that I'm clear. Um, we're basically um replacing what we have now with what we're working on is go is the suggestion.
It's Article Five, which is entitled accessory dwelling units. I think we just, we want to replace it in its entirety and as closest, there'll be some template from the
Right, so this is.
Trying to, everybody's trying to figure out is what can the local municipalities do beyond what they're getting from the state?
Yep, yep, so three, three, oh, accessory use regulations will be replaced with what we're working on tonight.
I thought it was five hundred.
Well, it's interesting because the first page is three, three, oh, three, three, one, three, three, two, three, three, three. And then there's a table. And then it goes to five one, oh and on. So.
Oh, okay. You're right, three, three, oh.
Okay, so and we don't have to.
Have to update both of them, right?
I would imagine, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah.
You knew that at one point because you sent this out.
Oh, so the thing I that I sent that was marked up in red was the three hundred section?
The three hundred and the five hundred section.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a while ago, okay.
Okay, and that's why I was, I was like, wait a minute, where are the threes? So, um okay, just we should pay attention to that before we had in our draft, but um.
Yep.
We we can clean that stuff up.
Yep.
Once we have the content. Yep.
Yep.
Show you, let's see here. Yeah, and the minutes I had put in the what we discussed last time around. Suppose I could find that too, huh? You guys can see this on my screen or your, my screen or your screen or?
No, that's good.
Yeah.
Double here.
Yep.
Double vision. Yeah, one of the big ones that I haven't seen any discussion of. Um, I was gonna send a question when the question period was open, but I didn't, and that is the how do you define gross floor area? I think we talked about that last time, right? See, there's three choices. It could be what the building code uses, which is basically conditioned space. And then the brokers have this habitable area thing, which is pretty similar. And then what the state is proposing is something very different, which is all the space, all the way to the outside of the exterior walls and the basement. And the only thing that's not included is things that have a roof and no walls.
So I guess the question is, how how do we take the definition we have for gross floor area and utilize it? If because we say the sum of the area of all stories of a building that is used for commercial biz, no, gross floor area. That's not this one, gross leasable area. Our definition for gross gross floor area applies commercial business or industrial use. That doesn't help us. Gross floor area shall include storage, other mechanical. I thought we had dealt with gross floor area.
We have, we do.
Where is it, though? Is it embedded in one of the sections? Gross leasable area.
Yeah, you're looking at definitions, but I thought it was defined in section three or five. Let's see.
That was, yeah. This is where Jane is gonna be helpful in making This is where Jane is gonna be helpful in making reconciliation between sections, huh?
We say total floor area. And there's no definition. At least in section five.
There, we have addressed this though, because remember it was, it was kinda convoluted and I believe CBA asked us to straighten it out.
Yeah.
And I thought we did.
And I thought we did as well.
And then what would we do with it? We didn't, we never updated the bylaw, right?
Well, did we embed it somewhere else?
Lynn has her hand up. Lynn, if you'd like to say something?
Well, you did change the definition of the floor area before it was excluding hallways and bathrooms and all sorts of things. But it's in the definition section.
That's what I thought.
Um, make sure you've got the most recent copy of the bylaw.
Right.
What I'm concerned about as far as the ZBA is concerned is what you're gonna do with those ADUs that exist that exceed nine-hundred square feet. That's why I would caution you eliminating the old bylaw. Perhaps just putting in a new one. And then allowing the old one to deal with those things that may come up in the future. I know Autumn Ridge, I think there's one at least that's over the nine-hundred square feet. Um, the second thing was I wondered what you were gonna put in. The state law allows for what they consider reasonable um restrictions, if you will. One of which they specifically list is site plan. I didn't know if you were getting into that at all. Um. And one other reason that I'm on here, so I don't have to come back again. Uh, you do know that the option to meet virtually uh, is only through the end of March of this year. Um, I've spoken to Robin Kennedy. It seems as though there is um a feeling in the legislature that they're more than willing to extend it, if not make it permanent. But might I suggest that you let them know how you feel about it, both Robin Kennedy and, uh, Megan Hillcoin.
Thank you, that's great.
They've told, um, Robin told me that the last couple of times, and it's true. It was done with a budget extension. And, um they're doing that sort of thing right now, so it would be well to contact them now. Uh, one of the things I had said to them. Even at ASABET, we meet in person. Actually, hybrid, we meet in person and we have the ability for folks to participate remotely. When we use virtual is when we would have all of a sudden an executive session for whatever reason, personnel reason, uh, potential litigation, contract negotiations. You cannot hold a, um, executive session without starting it in open session. Which would mean we need the facility to, or the option to hold the meeting and, um virtually, the open meeting, the regular meeting that would open the executive session, so that's one of the reasons that I've given them that we need it.
So floor, floor area is in the, in the definitions, I was looking under gross floor area, but floor area is the one we, we modified, so. That's the, the question then is, do we need to align that with what the state is proposing?
Yeah, cuz it's different because they measure from the outside of the exterior walls, we measure from the inside, we include, do not include unfinished basements, they do. Garages, I think is included in the state.
My house size is gonna double if they include basements.
Yeah, cuz we say the floor area measurement is exclusive of areas of unfinished basements, unfinished attics, attached garages or space used for off-street parking or loading breezeways, enclosed or unenclosed porches, elevators, stair bulkheads and accessory structures. And, and measured from the interior faces of the exterior walls or from the center line of any common walls separating, so. Yeah, there's that, whoo, that's quite a difference if they allow.
Yeah, um, Jane has her hand up.
So, we did submit comments on the draft regulations to, uh, State, um, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Um, and I was just checking their website, they expect to have the final regulations done by January thirty-first. So, uh, that definition for gross floor area is one of the things that we commented on. Um, and noted that we have gotten comments from other communities on that. So I'm hoping that there's a revision to the state definition.
Great.
That was all.
Good.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I don't see that flying. Um.
You know, it's interesting because, um if you include basements in particular, um, you're probably not gonna want to put one in your ADU because it's gonna use up a large chunk of your.
Exactly, yeah, it reduces the actual livable space.
Right. So you'd have, you'd, you'd wanna build a slab, but then on the other hand, um, by including the basement in the primary dwelling, half of that is now a larger number, right, for the ADU?
Up to nine-hundred square feet.
Yeah. So up to, up to eighteen, so if you had a if you had a primary dwelling that was less than eighteen-hundred square feet um with the way the state's written the law, you'd be able to include the basement and get all the way up to nine-hundred on the ADU. If you put it on a slab. And I was talking to, uh, Richard a little bit about slabs in New England. Where the ground freezes two to three feet deep. Um, he said that, uh, you put up, you put in a frost wall four feet deep. And you do various forms of insulation. Um, and it works, and you save money because you don't have to pour the floor of the basement. You don't have to frame the floor of the house. Um, you just pour slab. And, um I guess you have to pour, yeah. You either have to pour the basement floor or the slab, but you don't have to frame and build the floor of the house. So you do save some money. To me, it's a little scary where, where the ground freezes so deep here, but I guess it works.
Yeah, the post-up, the slab, and that's what we did, we dug down, built that insulated barrier and then worked from there, so.
Yeah, I think when Mark Rhodes was building those houses on South Street, near the school. I think the affordable ones maybe have slabs and the other ones don't, the other ones have basements or something.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Does, does work.
So.
For all your plumbing's gonna be in that with it.
Right? Yeah, I, I actually, so there's a bunch of slabs in this one neighborhood uh, in Framingham. Um. And when I worked at the carpet store more than once, we had to go out and do repairs to carpets when Home Depot, cuz they all have the plumbing going through the floor. And more than once, uh, nails got put through the plumbing. And then you have to rip up the carpet, you have to jackhammer up the slab to repair the pipe. So you might save money sometimes, and you might not sometimes.
Timmy Road, Timmy Road Development over in Hudson is all, um, slabs like that, and they did it was built in late sixties, early seventies, and they ran underground, uh, in-floor slab, uh, radiant heat. And the, 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 uh, the piping they used, the, um, the calcium that was in the uh, concrete ate up the pipe. And twenty-five, thirty years later, they were all springing leaks.
Yeah.
So they had to put in a different heating system. All those houses.
Crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, well, so back to the question, the question of, are these our three choices of how to define gross floor area?
I don't think we have a choice. I think the state's gonna tell us that our choice.
And the state is still considering possible amendments to that, right? Is that what I understood from CMRPC just a couple minutes ago?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I, I bet a lot of people have, um in during the open question period have submitted questions about that. Or concerns.
And, and, uh, Jane, do you think they're really come through by the end of, uh, the month here to, with that updated draft?
I would think so, in the last session that I was in with them, um, they had initially said they should have that and the model bylaw ready by February second when the act goes into effect. So, some, I mean, there's just a two-day difference there. So I would think so.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
So Jane, in regard to Lynn's question about existing text that would apply to ADUs that are already in existence? And what, what do you think other towns are gonna do in regard to? Are they gonna create a standalone section that's gonna use this updated language from the state and somehow um, apply it in the text to any ADUs that come before the town going forward from that date, and then the old text remains in place? And relevant to any ADUs that were in existence prior to that date, is that fair?
I can double-check the regulations, but my understanding is that they would be considered pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's what I would think.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make sense to have, to keep, oh, to keep the old bylaw that defines maybe we need to give it a different name, I think it's called in-law apartment, isn't it? It's not even called ADU?
Yeah, we call it, yeah.
We could call it in-law apartment, continue to call it in-law apartment and leave it there. And continue to allow it, right? And then add the ADU and uh, someone can choose which one they wanna develop, if they want more than nine-hundred square feet, they can still build it under our original in-law apartment bylaw.
Um.
And that way, one that exists will still be conforming.
That doesn't make sense.
No, I'm not sure. Doesn't make sense, I mean, you know, we we could have another use different than the ADU, um, but I would have to say that I, I'd really need to look at that to see how it all fit together.
If someone wanted one bigger than nine-hundred square feet, why wouldn't we just adopt let, some of the language that's in the in-law apartment? I-if size is the only thing. Um. Just incorporate, incorporate language that would allow for larger.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is to integrate a larger thing into the ADU bylaw, but I, again, that, there's a lot of moving parts there, I'd, I'd wanna I certainly wouldn't be prepared to talk about that tonight.
Right.
I mean, one of the provisions in the in-law apartment, of course, that we changed is that it, it's, um, through a special permit. And the applicant may apply for renewal of the special permit for another five-year period, that, there's a requirement that they come back and renew, which was gonna give everybody a, a chance to recognize the fact that this existed and continued to exist. And was still in compliance. Um. So yeah, you're right, Thomas, there's a bunch of wrinkles in the text of the in-law apartment that. Yeah, because we had, we had use limitations and the con- the continuity of those use limitations was, I think, why we put that, uh, why we put that in there. Right. Um. Yeah, again, it, it's, it's something to look at, but it's certainly not something that I'd be prepared to talk about at all tonight.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, both audience members have their hands up.
Right.
Um. Lynn, you wanna go first?
Yes, please.
Sure, um, just remember you have several different sections. It's not only just an in-law apartment. It's a detached accessory apartment.
Yep.
Accessory apartment. And a detached in-law apartment.
Yeah, no, they're, they're just, there's a lot of moving pieces, which is Lynn, just why I said we can maybe look at this, but, uh it's complicated, as they say.
Which is why, you know, you might wanna think about leaving what is in the bylaw in the bylaw. Adding this new ADU. And then after you shake out all of the different possibilities. Maybe updating it a year from now.
Now, that makes that makes sense, um.
Uh, Lynn, did you say that you understand that we can require all ADUs to be subject to special permit? Or not special permit to site plan?
Plan approval.
The bylaw or the state law basically says reasonable restrictions. Now, define reasonable. But it also specifically says such as site plan. So, I, I'm not sure, I think that's gonna have to come out in the regs.
So if it's, if it allowed us to include that, does the ZBA want that?
The ZBA doesn't want any more work than it needs. Um, I'm, I'm sure they'd be perfectly willing to give it up.
Yeah, right, I'm sure.
The thing is, what do we do with what we have existing?
Right.
And again, I think you would be wise. Jay's working on, you know, some uh, bylaw around the new uh, state law. Which will be terrific, but and you only need to make a handful of decisions there, do you want to have any um, restriction? Again, this is a planning board issue, it's not a ZB, the ZBA only reacts to what you do. Um, but I, I think to leave in place what we have again for a year and to just see how it shakes out would make more sense than to get halfway through the year and find out we've created a disaster someplace.
So a new, how would they know which bylaw to follow?
They would follow the bylaw that's easiest for them, guaranteed.
Yeah, which is gonna be the new one, as long as it's.
As long as they're willing to live with the size constraints, yes.
Right.
Right.
One question I have Lynn is, if it turns out that that we're getting no additional guidance so far on, um- that we're getting no additional guidance so far on, um, existing non-conforming lots, you know, for area or frontage. Someone has a home there, we wanna put a ADU in. I presume that we're gonna require a special permit for that. But then when that comes to your group for a special permit, what guidelines do you have? Like, how would you make that decision?
We wouldn't make the decision, the building commissioner would make the decision for us. The building commissioner is the one who says, this is what you need.
And then how how is he gonna do that? Like, what guidelines is he gonna use? Somebody shows up and, you know, they've got a lot that was conforming in nineteen, in eighteen fifty and not anymore, or whatever, and, um, and they want to put an ADU on it. How does, how does he make that decision?
I think, I'll just give you an example and I probably shouldn't because it's my own example. I have two lots where I am. The second lot was always questionable because it wasn't two acres. Although it's got, never been in totally the same name. But if it were to fall into the same name, it would have an issue with being combined into one lot, the two lots that I have.
Right.
But now that second lot has seventy-five feet, well, actually it has a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and more than ten thousand square feet. So the way I'm reading the state law, I could build a ranch, an eighteen hundred square foot ranch on that property. What happens? And this is the question I think you're coming to. If I were to decide I want an in-law apartment on that eighteen hundred square foot ranch. Can I do that? And I would say I don't see anything that I couldn't do, but I'm not the building commissioner.
No, I think, I think we it, it would certainly be advisable for us to look at the local bylaw and to deal expressly with non-conforming grandfathered uses and, um, and how we deal with that. I mean, that would be more permissive in terms of ADU. But I don't think it would be limited by the state, but I think that's something we'd have to think about.
So are you suggesting that the criteria used to decide on whether it'd allow an ADU on a non-conforming lot could be the same criteria that's used uh, when deciding whether someone can put an addition on their home on a non-conforming lot?
I think that's basically what I'm saying, yes.
I see, that makes sense, yeah.
Well, what are you gonna do when someone wants to have an ADU in an existing barn? And they want it to be fifteen hundred square feet?
Well, that would be under the other bylaw and not under the ADU. It would seem to me, at least as it's sort of shaking out right now.
Under the existing bylaw, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is why I try to make the case that, you know, it might be well to leave it there.
No, I think you make a good case for that, um.
You wanna see what Jane would like to contribute?
Yes.
I was going to agree with Lynn regarding not changing the in-law bylaw. Um, if you make any changes to it, it has to get through the attorney general's office. And I think in light of the new ADU requirements, it won't be passed there. So if you leave it as is, um,
Yeah.
You know, it can probably stay there.
Even though, even though we had a separate ADU section. But I understand it's a complicated story and it might not get through. Is that what you're saying?
It is. I, I think if you modify it, but it still allows for the larger units, then it might not get through the attorney general's office. The way the current, um, home Affordable Homes Act, uh, reads is that the unit can be nine hundred square feet or one half the area of the primary dwelling unit, whichever is less. And if you want to allow more than that, I mean, more square footage than that, or more than one unit, it, you shall require a special permit. So you can allow a bigger one, but it would have to be by special permit.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that differs from the in-law one.
I forget, did Tim, you, is it, does that require a special permit?
Yeah, it does. And, but I you know, I think what Lynn and Jane are both saying makes a lot of sense and that is create this as a separate section, leave everything else intact, let the dust settle. The whole notion that if, if we tried to make some modifications to the existing one and, you know, try to get it through the attorney general and it just wouldn't fly, really seems to indicate to me that we're better off just leaving that one as is for now and.
Certainly for now until the dust settles, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think that's the prudent thing to do.
Yeah. Um, cause I think there are arguments, if we had the ADU, we could make changes to this because it's not really relevant, but I understand that, uh, it's a complicated story and, uh, the AG can reject it basically just on that complication.
Yeah. So I mean, that, it simplifies our task to some degree because we don't have to try to figure out how to manipulate the existing texts. And those three sections, you got, you know, in-law accessory and detached accessory, all provided for in the bylaw, but, uh, if we don't, if we don't at this point have to touch those and we just have to focus on the the new text from the ADU. And if we're gonna see something from the attorney general, I mean, from, uh, from the state, you know, early next week, um, that means at our first meeting in February, we can look more closely at this and take into account what Jay's already tried to help us fathom. I'm, I'm confident that the select board would let us um, continue to make some changes to anything that we submitted for the deadline to when the warrant closes. I think they'd be happy to let us make changes afterwards and, and town council will look at it and you know, obviously we can get some help from Jane and central mass, so.
Yeah, that way we don't have to deal with the issue of differences in how you measure floor area, for example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Jane, what about, um, any of these grant applications? No, no word, huh?
Nothing yet on EEA. So we don't know why. Uh, it's very unusual for them to take this long. But we are still hopeful that we will hear something soon.
And I don't know whether you were on when we were discussing whether there was some ripple effect from what's happening in terms of federal grants and do you have any insight into that?
No, I did not hear, uh, that portion of the meeting. I, I've only heard a little bit on the news. Um, so nothing concrete yet. You know, my understanding is that most of our grants come through the state. I, I would believe that.
No, 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 I understand that. But if the state, you know, if the in put to the state from the federal government in terms of grant funding, um, is drying up, is that going to affect what the state does generally? That was
Oh, okay.
My question, yeah.
I have not heard yet.
Yeah. No, that's fine. And I don't think any of us have heard, so.
Okay.
But that was our, that was a concern we had discussed just in a couple of remarks, maybe before you joined.
We expect it could impact some of our, um, climate pollution reduction grant stuff.
You think so? Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make book on that one, uh, anybody wanna?
Not taking that bad.
All right. Yeah.
So I guess we don't even need to talk about the floodplain issue then, huh?
Floodplain? What floodplain? There's no floodplain.
I, if we're done with ADUs, I know.
Well, I did, I did have one more thing on that I wanted to discuss. Um, short-term rentals. So according to your draft, they're allowed.
No.
I thought, yeah. For short-term rentals only if allowed in and by compliance with state and local regs. That's allowed.
Well, the community, I, I believe that the communities get to decide.
Sure. And isn't that what we're doing in this document is deciding?
We don't, we never added any, we never put a content in our bylaw about short-term rentals.
We have nothing.
Briefly talked about it, decided nobody was, I don't wanna come here for a short-term rental.
Well, we, we still need to have some, this is an opportunity to have some sort of uh, relevant wording.
Yeah.
Jane?
There are three things that towns can decide on. One is whether or not they'll allow ADUs to be short-term rentals. The other is if they will allow any additional curb cuts or require the ADU to use the existing driveway. And the third is, uh, whether a town will allow more than one ADU.
On a lot.
On a lot. So you're allowed to restrict those three things.
Yes, to all of them. Well, the curb cuts thing, I, I probably told you, I, I spent some time talking to Fred about that. And, um, I know, and I, and Tom and I talked about it a little bit. We don't, I don't think we concluded that it was no reason to do that. That we're not really big fans of common driveways, so why would we eliminate the ability to have separate driveways? Right? Didn't we talk about that last, last meeting?
We did. I don't, uh, I'm still a fan of common driveways.
Yeah, I am too, actually.
Why?
Curb cut, um, wetlands impact.
Right. Environmentally, one clearing is better than two.
Yeah, set ourselves up for fistfights among the neighbors.
But if you think about all the common driveways we've got, I, it seems to me there's this one instance, is, are there more than that?
I know of another one.
But it's there's a lot of common driveways in town.
How are we getting involved in that? Because there's, you know, there are documents, there are easements and so on. I mean, and it, doesn't that become the property owner's issue? Why, why is it our problem?
Yeah, but if we create something that, if we create something that's going to have a, a problem for the property owners. I mean, I, yeah, we can't be.
But they, they agree to something, you know, and if they, if they we, we should probably talk about this at, at, you know, at another time because I would very much like to finish this at nine and we wanna talk about the Marlboro thing.
Right.
But, uh, it's like, you know what? You made the rules. It's like condominium, you know, I mean, things are the rules.
You weren't here for the, for that whole period of time that we were dealing with that, I guess.
But
No, I wasn't, perhaps, but, uh.
But we did say it was not within our jurisdiction and that
Correct.
Was, it was not.
It's a private agreement.
Right.
So I, I would like to comment on the idea that it's uh, less environmentally damaging to have a common driveway. I envision looking at a lot of properties that where an EDU would make a lot of sense. It makes sense because you can put a big distance between the primary dwelling and the ADU, so they're kind of not aware of each other, right?
Yeah.
And in each case that I've looked at, um, you could have a nice short driveway to the roadway that's on this remote part of the lot. And keep your nice short driveway going to the primary dwelling.
Yeah.
The alternative would be to put a very long complicated.
No, no, no. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that. I just think that, uh, I think we should keep the options open for what makes sense under the particular circumstances, um.
We don't mandate common driveways. That's a choice that a builder brings to us when they realize that they have a complicated series of lots with curb cut issues and wetlands issues. And they make that decision. So in, in regard to you know, an ADU, we're not gonna mandate, I don't believe, that you have to have a common driveway.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying you did.
I'm defending common driveways as a part of our text because I think in certain applications, it makes sense. And it may very well be that someone comes and says they want a common driveway for the ADU that they're adding to a particular lot. And the homeowner may want it that way, which is fine.
Yep.
I think, I'm just saying, that option needs to remain on the table.
No, and that's, that's exactly where I am in terms of common driveways, yes.
Okay, I thought, I thought we were gonna specify one of the other.
Oh, no, no.
No, 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 no. No.
Um, uh, Thomas is right and I, I think Jane might be interested in the conversation we had with, um, Marlboro because we've talked a little bit about, um, with the commission um, about some assistance at some point with the conversations. I know I talked to Carrie about it and I think Jane was in on some of the earlier conversations we had about Solomon Pond, so.
All right, let's transition to that if we're all set with the ADUs for now.
Thomas had some good ideas at the meeting with Meredith and I'll let him.
Okay, and I'll take off the cloak of invisibility to do this, okay? All right, um, let me say this, you know, going in there we had concerns, which we've discussed a number of times about the breadth of the list of uses that were in the Marlboro zoning bylaw amendment. You know, which I would summarize as they threw a lot of spaghetti at the wall and uh, there were some things and many things, uh, in, you know, in particular circumstances that, uh, you know, we would, we would find difficult with respect to, uh, the mall overlay zone. I think for me in the discussions, one of the things that, um, that was much more clear to me is that each of those uses, virtually, I think all of them, if, if, certainly most of them are, um, special permit. And we have to realize that Marlboro has a, you know, it's a city, it has a different structure, it doesn't have to go to the people. And, um, the city council approved all of those things, but approved all of those things as special permit items. Um, and it was very clear to us that, um, they did that very intentionally to be able to maintain uh, control over the entirety of the zone. The other thing that, uh, was clarified for me is that Marlboro doesn't necessarily recognize the overlay zone and, you know, that's that's a complicated, you know, web of things, um, but, um, we discussed the fact that we have a different, we have a different process here as, as a town. And if we were to And if we were to approve changes to the overlay zone, um, to approve something that was consistent with what Marlboro suggested would be extraordinarily difficult. And in fact, which would be to allow all of those things with a special permit. Um, the original overlay zone was done with a speci- very specific project in mind. And, uh, we approved those overlay zoning changes with a very specific proposal in mind. Uh, so what we talked about was the fact, first of all, Marlboro said that exercising the special permit power, it was not their intention to balkanize the physical area of the mall. They recognized that that had to be managed as an integrity. They recognize the fact that, uh, development in that area should complement, if you will, the core of the mall, which are a number of small businesses and restaurants and so on, and that development should be consistent with maintaining that, maintaining the taxable value of that and supporting, uh, that facility as being able to support those ongoing businesses. We took, we talked about the fact that, uh, for us to do a two-step process in which we somehow um, accepted the Marlboro zoning change and applied it to the overlay district with a special permit would be a very difficult sell in Berlin because people are used to the idea of knowing what they're voting for and not kicking the can down the road to a sp- a, a special permit process. And so therefore what we discussed was whether the, uh, city and the town could put together a memorandum of understanding that, uh, and, and, you know, and I, I wanted to present this, you know, as a discussion, and I can write it up further uh, for the next meeting, and we can put it on the agenda uh, as an item, but accepting certain principles, which was that we would respect the integrity of the mall as a physical development. Um, that it would not be developed piecemeal, that it would be developed in a way that was consistent with maximizing the value and the commercial opportunity of the core of the mall for the various small businesses that, uh, that were available, that the city and the town would work together toward those ends, um, and that what Berlin would be willing to do is as a particular plan was developed to take that to the town as a much more specific amendment to the overlay. Um, because again, they have a process where you have a city council. Um, they have the special permit, the people really don't have much to say about that, but we have to sell it to the general populace and, um, Marlboro felt that that, that was something that they could work with, uh, and so again, I will, I will write this up and present this, uh, as something for the agenda. But I think the suggestion is to put together a memorandum of understanding. I think this is a positive way of dealing with it. It, it allows us a seat at the table very early on because Marlboro will understand that in order to maximize the value of that, they have to work with us, and the memorandum of understanding would be that, you know, we would be involved at an early stage in order to facilitate uh, an amendment, a, a much more specific amendment to the overlay zone that would be consistent with a specific development project, and I'll stop there. I think, and Tim, you could certainly, uh, jump in if I've left anything out, uh.
No, I thi- I think that covers the main points. I mean, Meredith was re- you know, initially, we tried to explore how we could adopt changes in Berlin that would be sufficient enough to allow the, the project, a, a proposal to go forward and you know, I mean, sort of light dawned and, and Thomas said, well, why are we gonna modify the zoning at this point at all? Why don't we wait until a more specific proposal comes? Then it'd be a lot easier to go to town meeting once than twice. You know, if we made some modifications now and then in a year had to come back and say all hell broke loose, we've got an entirely different proposal, we need these modifications in addition, it, it, there's no sense to that.
And, and, and again, in that first stage, to mirror what Marlboro has, we would have to adopt all of these things and have them subject to special permit.
Yeah.
And my experience over quite a number of years is that the population of Berlin and the near of others and neighbors in the area are not going to be willing to support, you know, a whole list of any damn thing and leave it subject to a special permit process.
Right, it's too open-ended. The other point that I think Meredith made was that, that Marlboro's in a position where there's no pressure immediately, that the mall may be, eh, eh, you know, concerned, but that she used it as an example, a piece of property they bought half a dozen years ago for several millions of dollars, and they sat on it until the right project came along, and she really does agree with us that the whole site of this overlay needs to be dealt with comprehensively and you know, we asked specifically, you know, if you get a proposal to put a fast food restaurant in front of Macy's, are you gonna, and she said, no, no, we're not, we're not gonna do this piecemeal, it's gonna be done in a comprehensive fashion, and that I think made us a lot more comfortable with the notion of not moving forward with anything at a town meeting immediately. Um, sending this message that sort of clarified that that the town was willing to work together and that we would really want to do it comprehensively with Marlboro. I spoke with Peg and I spoke with Kristen and I shared that news to them and, and, you know, I think they both came away from that conversation feeling uncomfortable that we didn't need to do anything at this town meeting, which, uh.
That's, that's great. That's great, and, and you know, and I think the next step would be to formulate, you know, a sort of letter of understanding, and Marlboro said that they were willing certainly to consider that. Um, so, you know, what I would suggest is that before the next meeting, I would sketch that out, we can run it by the selectman, but it does seem to me it gets us a seat at the table. It gets us into a process that is politically both possible and economical of effort and so on in, in Berlin. Um, and it sure is that the, uh, that the two municipal entities will work together to develop that, uh, uh, you know, that, that common resource.
Right, and it shows that we're not just digging our heels in and saying, no, you're not doing anything, that we are willing to work with you, them, but that, you know, because our process is different.
Yep, absolutely, and, and I, I would, I, I would favor actually, you know, establishing, uh, you know, a letter of understanding in terms of how we how we proceed with this, because I think that will as personalities change and so on, that will, you know, that will establish a structure that's that's workable and can be used in the future, because this may be a year from now, and maybe two years from now, who knows?
Right, so did you say that they're not really recognizing the overlay?
Um, yes.
So how do we make sure that this memorandum of understanding?
Yeah, because it's an agreement that as we, as we go forward with the plans for development of that common area, that we will work together. That's, that's what we're saying, that's the substitute.
There is no evidence that uh, with the, the development agreement, for instance, that we signed with NED. Um, we were the only signatories, they, Marlboro wasn't a part of that.
I see.
And, and that the overlay and any other documents that we might have recorded um, did not get recorded in Middlesex County and from Marlboro with anybody, so.
Yeah.
There's no record that the lawyers that worked with Bader, um, that consultant for a while
Mm-hmm.
ever could, um, generate that suggested that there was some sort of legally binding document on their part. So the letter of understanding actually gives us more protection than we've got today, so the notion that they're willing to move forward with that, I think puts us in a better position to work strategically down the road, eh, you know, in a comprehensive fashion than we would otherwise, so.
All right, so, a- and again, what I will do is, you know, is draw up an outline of what, uh, what I heard. Obviously, you know, there will be many steps to, uh, developing that and present that at, um, the next, uh, the next meeting and, um, perhaps also, you know, give it to the selectman, I'm glad that Tim has had those conversations. Um, again, I, I see this as, you know, really an opportunity to empower us to be, you know, reasonably equal party at the table as that's developed.
Do we need to vote on you drafting that?
No, 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 I'm, I'm gonna be presenting a report. Um, we don't need to vote on that, I, you know, again, this, before I put things into writing, I wanted you know, to give an oral report of what was going on, and, um, I will write it up.
I came away a lot happier than I was prepared to be, so, uh, you know, I thought this.
That's always a good thing.
This could really, well, I mean, my conversations prior to this with, you know, the mayor and everybody, I, I always felt like there was a reluctance on, I mean, it was sort of like, well, just, we've done the heavy lifting, we've got this report, we've got these uses, we've got these modifications to dimensional requirements, just if Berlin wants to just accept those, it'll be fine, and, and, uh, I think this time Meredith clearly understood that, as Thomas has said, trying to go to a town meeting um, is a lot different than going to a city council.
Yep. So anyway, that's the, uh, that's, that's the report, I will, um, I will write up sort of, uh, draft points for that memorandum. Um, we'll try to get it to the selectman, um, beforehand or, you know, pretty promptly after we discuss it, and we can take it from there.
Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, we, it was really making it up as we went along, because when we realized that they didn't recognize the overlay zone, it was like, okay, ha- you know, what can we do, what can we do to, you know, give us what we want, uh, in substitute for that?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay?
Good job, guys.
Yeah.
It was, it was, it was a, a cordial, and I think it was a, a, uh, I, I think it was a very productive meeting.
Yeah, no, it was fun, um, I, I, like I said, I was I was relieved big time.
For the minutes, who did you, who did you meet with?
Meredith Harris, she's the director of the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation.
So she, she advises and really sets things up for the city council and the mayor on these kind of issues.
Okay, how do you spell her last name, Tim?
H A R R I S.
Oh, Harris.
Yeah, and they, you know, there was, there were three. She had two staff in the office, I mean, it's clear that they're they're, they're, I mean, you looked around downtown, you know, sh- their, their hand was in all those different developments, the, the new apartments that are being built, um, you know, where across eighty-five there and twenty, and she was in the old fire department and, um, you know, the city hall's being redone, the tower and all that, I mean, there's a lot happening in Marlboro, so. And she, you know, I mean, I, I think her feeling was that they were in a, in a good position. Like I said, to be able to wait on this, that, there's no.
Right.
They, they don't need to rush, um, and that's.
Yep, and, and I would say this, that one of their concerns was in negotiating with a potential developer a proposal. Uh, did they have a process that would include the whole area um, that they could work with, and after we had discussed this possibility, she said absolutely, she said, this is something that we can work with.
Awesome. That's encouraging.
Yeah.
On another note, I was reading that retail is back. So retail, real estate had kind of hit a bottom.
What about swimming pools?
There you go. They're back too. Yeah.
You know, people are starting to.
Cause the whole economy is gonna be underwater with the tariffs, so swimming pools are gonna be back in. Anyway, so anyway, that was, that was it, and as I say, I will, I will write up, uh, sort of a rough draft of those you know, items of agreements, and, um, we can put that, uh, on the agenda, run it by the selectman. Selectmen want to attend when that's a, a matter on the agenda. Those will be the next steps.
I'll reserve you a spot, you can pick your time.
Okay, well, I have to say it was, you know, a little more than, uh, thirty years ago now that, uh, we did the first one, and when I did that, I we actually said it had a, you know, lifespan of maybe thirty years, and so we should be careful of how we did it, but at the time, I was dearly hoping I wouldn't have to deal with that transition. Anyway, there you go.
Yeah, Thomas and I both celebrated our birthdays on the twenty-sixth of March nineteen ninety-four, when the mall vote happened, so.
Yep.
Um.
Wow.
It was a hell of a day.
Yeah. Yep. Anyway.
And that's one of the things we talked about, that, that, what's the life expectancy of a monster like this, and you know, we, we knew there would be some point in time when, uh.
Well, I think we even said, you know, thirty years was the, you know, foreseeable time, and we should manage the income and everything, uh, it would, with that in mind, um. Yeah, I mean, we also thought that it was a considerable facility, and it could be repurposed, and there was a lot of money in that, and there would be private investment that would support that, but we, we really did think that, um, you could count on thirty years, and after that, you know, who knows?
Yeah.
And there was no way to foresee what was gonna happen to online retail and.
No, app, this was all.
Sure, this is all analog.
I've, I think I bought my first thing on Amazon, which was a book in nineteen ninety-nine, you know, which was five years after this happened. Yeah.
Wow.
All right. Any questions or anything on that? And as I say, I'll get something out, uh, at least a week ahead of time of, uh, our next meeting, okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right.
So before we, um, make a motion to Jim, um, Jay, does your auti- artificial intelligence program or your chat GPT, does it write reports for the, uh, annual town meeting? Wouldn't that be great?
Hmm.
My nephew showed me the comments from his professor. I'm not sure what exactly the, the course was, but he had to review a scientific article and write, you know, kind of summarize it.
He used chat G P Ts. He still said he had to put some work into it. Comments from the professor, who obviously had no clue that was going on, were unusually positive. Wow, this is one of the best I've ever read.
Holy macro.
Yep.
Okay, on that cherry note.
So I'm looking forward to
Can we do chat G P T planning board? Well, so we can read for ten minutes, read over things and make the grammatical corrections.
So my brother, I guess, was the clerk of the community association up at the lake. Whatever you call it, whatever is the neighbor, the yeah, community association, right? And they have these meetings, a lot of mostly retired people show up. And there'll be some hot issue and each person in turn will say the same thing.
No, man.
Times, you know, ten or whatever. And he ran, he ran, I think, I don't know if it's chat G P T or one of the one of those tools and showed me and it started out really great. I was very amazed with it and he loved it, but then I kept reading it. And each time someone got up and said the same thing, it reported that. So it was ended up being this long thing with so and so said this and so and so said that.
And I gotta say, you know, and maybe it's because I was a a compliment major, but I read stuff that was done by chat G P T and I think I could spot it right away. It's like, this is not this is not human. It's like, and it's an avatar speaking and there is I I don't know. Maybe we're all doomed.
Too much, there's all these words, you know, superlatives and adjective. We, it's it's the kind of text that you get from someone and you take, you know, two out of every three words out and then it becomes
Yeah, no, exactly, exactly, exactly. It seems, I'm like, what's the big deal? You can spot this a mile away, but anyway.
I think it's getting a lot better. Now it turns out all that money we spent on it was unnecessary because the Chinese
Made a budget version.
Equivalent for like a hundred fifty yuan, right?
Yep.
Which is what it's, which is what it's worth. It's like, you know, I I often say in in the office, when I have to produce something, which is an analysis, I said, I often say, I could have given you a ten-page memo in two days. But it took me four days to give you a two-page memo. That
Yep.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I do a lot of editing and that's the number one thing you do is try to
Yep.
Cut the text down so people can read it.
The weed whacker.
But I think it's all, it's getting better. Like it really is getting better. And I'm amazed, you know, when you, when you use Google now, the, the top of the page is this A I, it used to be featured there was content from one website that seemed to answer your question and now it's gone further and there's two or three sources. It integrates and puts up there. And it's usually pretty useful, I think.
Yeah.
It's getting better.
But I've been trying to figure out, because I'm working on websites for these companies I work with, I'm trying to figure out, what can we put on our website so that it'll get chosen?
Right.
Advertising. It's like you couldn't ask for anything better than that.
Yep.
And so my theory I'm working on is the Google likes Q and A. So we're gonna put Q and A in the website and then make sure that that the answers are brief so that because the good thing about the A I tool they have now, it's got multiple sources in it also cuts it down to a, you know, a single paragraph or a couple paragraphs. Is a large volume of content it finds into a condensed smaller version, which is a challenge, like what we're talking about. It it does that.
No, yeah, no, I certainly noticed that. Cause I do a lot of legal research and it is helpful in this sense of collecting things, but of course I then have to go to the primary source. I can't rely on, you know, some A I synopsis of you know, a court judgment, for instance, but it is helpful in terms of cutting through a lot of the static in terms of what's out there, but then I really, I still really have to look at the original. Anyway.
So Tom, I, I think your question got lost in all of that conversation.
Oh, yes. Who's going to do the annual report? I think that was really the question, right?
I was hoping A I would do it for us, but short of that, yes.
Yeah, I think we we may have to rely on J T.
Jay, did you write it last year?
Yes, I've written it for a few years.
You do such a good job.
Yeah, it was fantastic. Some of the best that we've ever had.
Content like the first couple of years I did it. There were a lot of kind of interesting things that, you know, visible or whatever, interesting to many people. Things that we did. There's just a lot more going on now, you know, the marijuana issue and I forget the other ones. Last year, we just had a lot less to work with. So it was, it was more challenging.
It can be, it can be short. And let me say this, that if you, if you want to do a rough draft and you want to pass it along, I'm happy to, you know, if you just kind of throw some stuff at the wall, I'm happy to to take a cut at it. If that's helpful, yeah.
Sure, that would mean I'd have to do it before eleven fifty-nine on the night when it's due, right?
Which is Friday.
You just have to tell me to stay up late if you're gonna do that, but if you do it a couple of days ahead of time and let me know, I I'm I'm hap, or if you want to early on, just throw a bunch of stuff in there, I I'm happy to take a cut at it.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
The first part
This is helpful. Go ahead.
The first part, which takes most of the time, is going over through all the minutes and collecting what we did, right?
Right.
Yep.
And so I, I don't know if you guys ever look at it, but I've got a I put all the minutes together at least once a year so that it's one giant book, right? Which makes it maybe
Do I have that?
Hard copy?
I think I've posted on the website.
Oh, okay.
I keep it because when someone requests a copy of the minutes from every meeting where, when their property was mentioned or something like that, I can search for the, you know, their property.
If the minutes are posted, you just push them, you just should tell them where they're posted and they can gather them all themselves.
That's what I do, because they're all online, right? Rather than extracting them all for them. I say, here, here are the meeting dates when your property was mentioned.
Right. Yeah, Louise.
Do we, do we want to farm out, you know, like reviewing that per quarter and then just throwing it all together? Or would you rather take a first cut out of Jay?
Let me, let me try it.
Okay. But again, if you want to do something extremely rough, just to catalog and pass along, I could, I'm happy to to take a second cut of the draft if that's, if that's helpful and efficient for you.
Does anyone know when it's due?
Friday.
Huh?
Through the end of the month, I thought.
Yeah, January thirty-first.
Yeah, but then you've got thirty days of stringing them along and making excuses, right?
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I, I have to do a shade install in Stowe, Vermont tomorrow. So I plan on bringing my computer while Glenn drives. Louise, I have five pages of notes that Louise put together when she went through the minutes. And I'm going to take all of that and incorporate it into our document.
Can you do that when you're driving? I always intend to do that. I just can't do it.
Well, you can't drive and do it, Jay.
No, Glenn, Glenn's gonna drive.
With adaptive cruise control, you can do it.
No, and really what I've, I've come to determine is I can't watch Glenn drive. It's much better for me to have something to do.
So Carol is sitting in the Uber backseat with her computer and yeah. Awesome.
Yep.
Well, I'm going snowmobiling for a week and the next, uh, week after next. I could bring it along, but I kind of doubt I'm gonna be able to work on it while we're snowmobiling.
Do
Because you need both hands to steer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was, I'm looking at my, I'm trying to find posted minutes. Where, where have we got them?
If you click on planning board.
On my town government.
I went to my town government, but I don't see anything.
You should see everything except this one we just approved. But what I'm not sure if I posted or not is that file I'm telling you about where I put it up, where I
Says minutes are not on record with the town clerk's office.
Well, that would be for like last meeting.
Is this something you could send us a link to, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me just look at it here.
Huh, it is interesting. I see a whole bunch of stuff that's been uploaded. But I don't see anything that says minutes.
You on my town government?
Well, if you go to, if you go to past meetings, so scroll down, there's a whole bunch of documents, although now what I'm doing is I'm putting the documents in the same file as the minutes I didn't before. But if you go below that, it says past meetings. And on the right-hand side of the screen, it says minutes available.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You click on that. Oh, yeah, when you click on that, then partly down the page is a PDF document and that's it. You see that?
Yep, yep, I got it. Yeah, and then you can download the minutes.
It's not that easy to find, yeah.
No.
There it is, yeah.
I think what confused me was December ninth, Berlin Memorial School. Can you go back?
Well, so that one, see, we
That's right before the special town meeting.
Right, but we didn't actually have a meeting.
Right, can you go in and cancel that?
I tried and I couldn't figure out how to do it.
Is it too late?
But if you click on the minutes for there, it, you just get a message that says the meeting didn't happen.
Got it.
I shouldn't, I don't think there's anywhere, there's nothing for, there's actually one meeting that I was in Europe. I didn't even attend. There are two meetings I didn't get to this year and one of them, Thomas wrote the minutes, which I posted.
Yep, I saw that.
The other one, I don't know what happened. I don't know if anybody took minutes or not. It was when I was out of the country, which was
October tenth, maybe? Twenty, oh, that's twenty twenty-three.
Were you in, you were in Denmark? Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Yeah, and that one was on the twenty-second of October. And I don't think I ever got any minutes.
No, twenty-second of October of last year has minutes.
No, I think it's gonna say not available. Just a text file.
Oh, yeah.
Available.
Yep.
But I didn't, I couldn't find anything. I'm I don't know if you guys took minutes then.
I don't know.
No, I I just took them on the
You should, you should
Yeah.
Put a link to the Zoom meeting in there.
Yeah, if I can find it, yeah. Or I can put a change the note and say you're interested in minutes, look on YouTube.
Right?
You can watch the whole thing.
You can watch them all.
I'm not sure I'm willing to binge watch our planning board meetings. Alright. So I, I, I'm still not sure we answered that question.
Oh, who's gonna write it?
Okay.
Um, well, let me, let me look at it and if I need help, I will definitely reach out to
Yeah, reach out and, yeah, we can, we can touch base individually. You know, I'm willing to to do certainly some portion of it, okay?
Yep, you could actually look back to that meeting and see if there was anything that we want to put in the annual report from it.
Which meeting was that?
October twenty-second.
Okay. Okay. Alright then.
Okay.
Alright.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm gonna be in Canada, so I'm gonna try to dial in, but I can't promise. We're gonna be driving up that day.
There might be a tariff on the, on the call.
And you might not even need a passport because it'll be the fifty-first state, so.
That's a great point.
Yeah. It's funny because I, I was on a conference call with a number of people and there were two people who were like talking over each other and I kind of went, you know, timeout. And one of the persons said, yeah, and they stopped talking so that nobody was talking. And they were from our Dublin office and they said, oh, this is a Mexican standoff. I said, no, no, no. It's a Gulf of America standoff. Anyway, alrighty.
Alright, uh, I took a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, yeah.
Motion's made and seconded. It's non-discussable, discussable. I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.